I'll call the meeting to order and we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Point holder, the agenda does need to be approved before we do the consent agenda.
Oh, I apologize, that's what I was doing, but I wasn't reading it, talking it that way.
Uh, yes, and I do actually have three things to add on to miscellaneous at the end.
Okay.
One of them is requesting permission to hire a parks position. Uh, one of them is a personnel announcement, and then, uh, one of them is a kind of a discussion request to talk about the ARPA funds and how we wanna go forward with that.
Okay. All right, I would take approval of the rig- or of the agenda with those additions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Now you give me the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Sean made a second, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we'll get to the consent agenda, sorry about that.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Bruce to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, opposed, motion carries. All right, number four, Mr. Cavett.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, um, I think we'll start with just a quick update on the, uh, on the, uh, project, um. I have been out for a week, so my updates may be a little lacking, uh, besides the one, the half hour walkthrough that I did before tonight, but, um, just to let you know, the, uh, the, all the concrete work in the roundabout is, was completed, and the last of the colored concrete there was done. Um, they have sidewalks and stuff around the roundabout to do after the, after the pavement's strong enough to get trucks into, before that concrete. And they're working on a lot of concrete to the east, a lot of concrete walk and things like that. Really, by the end of this week, I think it'll, it'll, it'll be quite a bit done, and by the end of next week, I think we're looking, I mean, it's gonna be looking pretty good. It's still probably have some landscape work, signs going up, lights going up, that'll probably carry it into about that first week of Oc- of November's, or kinda end of October, first week of Novem- November. And with the day's extension they have, that's kinda about where, where we're at, it's for schedule, so. Anything on, anything on the updates on the project, any questions on that at this point? Okay. Uh, the other item I have for you is, um, modification of the existing construction contract, uh, change orders number twenty-four and twenty-five. Just a quick explanation of those, uh, again, there's an explanation in the memo, and then the detailed change orders are attached, but change order twenty-four was, um, an item that MINDOT is covering a hundred percent, there was some additional work and finesse work that was done during the milling down by, uh, QuickTrip, and, uh, it had always been agreed to that they, they would cover that additional cost, there was a little bit of back and forth between the DOT and the contractor and what that would be, and that's what it was finally settled in at, so. Um, again, a hundred percent item by MINDOT. The other item, number ch- twenty-five, is one that, uh, we, uh, struggled with a little bit here too, um. What it is, this is a relation to the, uh, ornamental railing that's gonna go up, where you've seen all the, uh, landscape monuments that have been put up, these are the, where the landscape, uh, landscape areas that were put in, landscape easements. And, um, we had, uh, had discussions with property owners early on in the project and to kinda come up with the scenario of where these would all go in, and ultimately, there were three locations that, uh, property owners decided not to, uh, go ahead and proceed with the landscape easements and dedicate them, so. We had less monuments that went in, and then we had less railing that went in, and anytime the contract ex- uh, you reduce a quantity by more than twenty-five percent, and in our case, it was, I think it was about thirty-four, thirty-eight percent, somewhere in there. They can renegotiate the, the unit price on the railing. So the other, so because the reduction in the price, um, or a reduction in the, in the quantity, they can reduce the pri- or they can adjust the price because it, it, there's some efficiency that is at a loss because there's less quantity. The other thing that came into a play is, um, during COVID and because of, uh, um, chain, supply chain issues and all that, kinda, the, this cost of steel has gone up like three hundred percent. So that added into their new renegotiation process, so. Um, so we had to, we had to spend some, a lot of back and forth kinda coming up, agreeing on what was reasonable, um, what were our alternatives to, um, negotiate, renegotiating the unit price. And we basically came up with this recommendation, now I should point out, we're doing less quantity, so as you can see, the, th- this is actually a reduction in the, in the cost that we're gonna spend on railing because we're gonna have less. It's just we're paying a little, little bit more, a little, about ten percent more per foot on that railing because of the renegotiated price and the, uh, increase in steel price. So one thing we struggled with is what are our alternatives? Uh, as I noted in my memo, this is a disadvantaged business enterprise, that means they're a small contractor. They basically said they, they can't bear this, this, the increased cost in steel, and they'll walk, which leaves that with the general contractor, which means we, they're in a pro- we had, we go through a whole process of finding another contractor. Even if they were able to hold prices, which they don't have to, because again, the reduction in the unit price, or the uni- reduction in the unit quantity, those prices can be renegotiated, we'd have been dealing with a new contractor and all, all kinds of other additional cost engineering, et cetera, we'd go with it just to deal with a different contractor. So what we came up with was, what was negotiated and recommended was to accept this adjusted unit price, and then the, like I said, in the end, we actually have a deduct on, on this item because of the reduction in the amount of quantity. Sounds a little confusing, it was a little, took a little bit to work through, through all that, um. So I guess, any questions on that?
Are these, uh, the areas that are the handicap two-by-four railings right now, is that that?
That's separate, and there's no change on those items, those are, um, those are handrail, hand railing that's gonna go in, and it's, it's being done by the same contractor, and that unit price is not changing. And that work will probably, it'll get, it'll get fabricated this, late this fall, early winter, probably won't get installed until spring unless they have some good weather and they decide to install it this winter.
And what were the three locations of the, uh, that was originally anticipated to be part of the landscape easements?
Yeah, they, we had, we had put in, um, uh, Humble Pie, a small section, two p- uh, um, Insurance was a small section, and the biggest stretch was down at, uh, Hartman Well. Um, we still have it in, uh, at the building and parking lot next to that, but not at, not at Hartman Well, so that was the bigger, the biggest quantity was changed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve it, the resolution that's presented.
So moved.
Bruce made the motion, Rick made the second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public hearer that wants to be heard on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, um, I'll move on to number six, public hearings.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is not actually a public hearing, um, but this is just a request to set a public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, for, uh, on sale, uh, liquor at, uh, for the Don't Be Lion LLC, through the Rusty spoke, and so this would be setting, a request to set a public hearing for November first at six P M.
Okay. Do you, uh, do you wanna come up and state your name and your address?
Hi, Pauline Padazo, so I'm the owner of Don't Be Lion, um, looking, or I'm buying Flipside, closing on Wednesday. The address of that's three twenty-nine Main Street West, um, buying the whole building. Three kids are here, so I live in Prior Lake, lived there for five years, so I'm doing this for my kids. So, closing this week, looking forward to it.
Good, good luck to you.
Thank you.
So what are your intentions, to have more of a restaurant, or?
More of a restaurant, family-style restaurant, um, kids welcome, you know, more sports bar as well, you know, have lots of TVs there, um. Everyone keeps talking about the breakfast, so definitely will bring the breakfast back, at least on the weekends, till things kinda get figured out and settle down, but it's the plan right now, keep it as a family-style, family-friendly, casual restaurant.
Good.
Burgers and whatever else, beer.
Thank you. I would take a motion, um, for the public hearing to be on November first.
So moved.
Maggie and Sean, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, and all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Uh, ordinances for adoption, ordinance number three twenty-five, amending chapter seventy-two of the city code relating to parking relations for semi-truck parking.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we, uh, spoke about this at our last council meeting, uh, the ordinance that would, uh, in effect, uh, not allow semi-parking on public streets in the city, with the exception of offloading or unloading actively. We did have a first reading at the last council meeting, and we're looking for the second reading and adoption of the amended, amending ordinance to city code, section, uh, seventy-two point zero-three.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to approve ordinance number three twenty-five.
So moved.
Rick made the motion, is there a second?
It would be, um, to, just a correction to the motion is to, um, hold the second, is this?
In the second.
Hold the second reading, yeah, in adopting the amend. Or is this, this is our second reading though, isn't it?
This is the second reading, so this, the motion would be to adopt the ordinance.
Gotcha, okay, I was just reading the recommendation, I thought, wait a second, but we already, so, I'll second the, the original motion.
Okay, there's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Maggie, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, um, general business, update on Central Plaza Committee.
Mayor, City Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present the, uh, final concept design for Central Plaza here in New Prague, I'm Karen Luger, I'm a landscape architect with S C H. Uh, this project really, um, is a culmination of, uh, work by the, uh, Ad-Hoc Committee and Jen Crava, and, uh, getting all the stakeholders involved, um, in the recent past couple of months, we met twice, and before the pandemic, the committee had met, met five times to work through some early concepts and design themes, and basically, the, the final concept really, uh, takes these, uh, this, this early concept and, um, furthers the, the design along a little bit so it can be built, so. Basically, this first page shows the early concept that the group had decided was, was the direction they wanted to go with the theme of the plaza space. And so these are just some design directives or design understanding, just so you get a background, understanding of what, what the, the plaza design really is about. Uh, there, there was discussion on the creek and the tributary, so that's really creating a place that echoes the flow and form of Sand Creek and the Raven Stream Tributary to acknowledge the importance of these waterways to the cultural history of New Prague and also the natural history. And that leads to the woodland planting, so select plantings that bring up, uh, the sense of a woodland creek valley. Uh, the all, another, uh, point that came out, uh, was to have a place for gathering, provide opportunities for small gatherings, uh, and performance, as well as places for individuals and small groups to comfortably sit, eat, explore, and experience the plaza. And then another important component was future public art, so consider public art and historical interpret- interpretation to be added to the plaza in the near future. Accessibility is really important, that provides spaces, pavements, and amenities that are accessible to all, and also to include two accessible parking stalls in the parking lot, uh, adjacent to the plaza. Quality, select products and materials that are of high quality, ease of maintenance and long-term durability. Wall treatment, so the wall along Pioneer to improve the existing concrete block wall with stucco to provide a neutral, low maintenance and aesthetic backdrop to the plaza space. And then finally, the rotary clock, uh, we are to include a location and infrastructure for the Verden, uh, post clock as donated by the New Prague Rotary Club, so. This here is a plan, concept plan, um, based on all those design understanding components, and to orient you, to the right is north, that's towards City Hall, and then on the bottom of the page is Central Avenue, and to the left is Main Street. So basically, we're taking this flowing form of the creek and applying it to the plaza in a very loose conceptual manner. But it creates two places where people can enter the plaza, one is bookended on the south end, uh, by the, uh, new streetscape amenities, and then you come in, there's, the clock will be there, uh, right there in the corner. And then you have seating, and then you have some picnicking areas, these are, uh, tables and chairs for people to sit and eat, and then it opens up a little bit to the north end where there could actually be a gathering area, you have a small, uh, band or, um, puppet show, and right now, we're showing about four hundred square feet, so you could easily have twenty-twenty-five seated people in chairs that are lined up and also have accessible aisles, you can certainly fit like a whole classroom sitting on the pavement. And then, uh, also bench seating, framing around that area to provide additional seating. And so there's certain amenities, there's plantings, uh, there's, uh, some additional plantings on the, on the north end to screen the parking lot where we have accessible parking, where the, there'd be trees and some shrubs, and then, um, but also other plantings throughout the space. And so, you go here, here's a rendering showing what it might feel like, uh, from the street, looking in. Um, obviously, it's, uh, vegetated, uh, and then, but it has enough space for people to, to gather either together or individually. And then these are also some more renderings that, uh, show bird's eye view into the space from the south, and how it might feel when you're in the space. And this is looking from the, uh, the northeast, and you can see there is a fence that runs along the Pioneer Saloon to the north, and the idea that to screen kinda the, the alley and the access to the, to the joining, um, property, but not be a, a solid wall either. And so some of the plants are woodland plants, uh, they're selected mainly for the conditions of the site, uh, which was, might see a lot of shade, um, but also provide some variety of color and, um, and experience within the plaza. The seating is, uh, we're proposing high-quality seating, uh, the benches would be a place for people to actually sit and rest, little tables for people to put their drinks and eat, uh, just something that's high, highly durable and will be, will endure over time. Uh, images of the horizontal slot fence, and then planters, and then a plaza sign possibly as you enter from the south, that canilever, um, and then, uh, stucco options, uh, recommending a traditional stucco application for the wall for long-term durability. And also lighting is something we also looked into for, uh, breaking up the wall, having three wall lights, wash, wall wash lights, three lights within the trees, uh, uplighting the trees, the clock will actually be backlit, and then also providing receptacle ballards, uh, for electrical, uh, resource for, um, for plugging in for events, et cetera. So basically, the plaza here is shown in a CAD plan, uh, there will be a new utility fiber optic be done by others, and that'll be on the northeast corner here, and that, um, we'll just need to work around that, uh, with the design, but as you can see, the cost breakdown right now, um, comes about one fifty-nine with a ten percent contingency at this point, to be right under one seventy-five. And these numbers are just typical unit prices, again, um, there could be variability depending on the market and the conditions. Uh, the piece that is broken out here shows the lighting and electrical, which would be provided by the, uh, uh, New Prague Utilities Commission, uh, the fixtures and then installation, and we would need to coordinate that. And the other item that is still, uh, would be recommended as a consideration would be to do drip line irrigation in the planting areas, just to, um, ensure the longevity of, of, of those plants and also for ease of maintenance for the city. And then, finally, talk about the public art component, because this is a big part of the discussion with the committee and is very important to the committee. Um, ideas for potential future art, it could be individual sculpture pieces, the plantings could be removed if need be, all the, all this, the infrastructure would be set up so that they could easily do that. Um, so you have individual sculpture, you could have a backdrop for the performance area, you could do, um, an overhead, uh, art piece that casts shadows onto the pavement, um, an art panel against the wall, or along the wall, and then also, um, interpretive history throughout the site. So, and these are just some images that, uh, Jen Crava, who was heavily involved with the design early on, and then through, she was our subconsultant through this process, put together different ideas of, of art components, and then one idea would be to have digital projection on the wall, and it could be temporary for events, special events, um, as a, you know, feature component for the art piece of it. And so, with that, today, our goal is to get approval for the concept plan, so we can move on to construction documents, uh, so that we can, uh, have CDs done in January, uh, for January, February contractor selection, and April twenty-twenty-two construction start, so it can be completed by July. And with that, I'll take any questions or concerns?
Any questions?
I think it looks great, um, the only question I have, and Josh, you probably don't know about this, but last summer, we had talked about, Pioneer has about eighteen inches of their building that's on that, that we were trying to clean up and Mike was working on it, he was gonna pay all the fees and everything else, it wasn't gonna, uh, cost the city anything, but do you know where we're sitting on that, has that been addressed, but before?
It never got completed. Yeah, so I, I don't think it's been completed yet, I know Ken's been working on it.
Okay.
Um, and I, it sound, I think he's in the works to get that, that wrapped up here pretty soon.
Right, I don't wanna delay anything, I just, uh, just to clean that up just a little bit, it would make more sense, and Mark was, the owner of Pioneer was very accommodating to everything, he really sees the value in this, and whether the, the committee wants to put art on his wall or whatever, it's fine, but I just wanted to clean up the.
Yeah, I, I know that Ken is working on it.
Okay.
So that's not in this plan because it, she was talking about stucco, so are you talking about putting a stucco over that block wall? And then do a projection screen thing?
Well, that's just an idea, the stucco is part of this construction, to, to, you know, to neutralize that block wall and to, to improve it in the interim until there is some art, like, projection could be, um, like a digital projection, so it just would be temporary, as opposed to a, a mur- mural, which was discussed, but it seems like the group was moving away from that option.
Okay. The tables and others, are they meant to be taken off on winter, or are they permanent?
They could be permanent, they could be mounted or not mounted, uh, there was discussion about that also with the committee about leaving as long, leaving them there all year round, but they could be removed if need be.
And then, I'm trying to, uh, if I understand the lighting, there's no direct light features, it's, it's up light and wall wash lighting?
That is correct, right now, there's no, we, there is an existing light fixture on the northeast corner, that's one, your older ones, it's a globe one, so that does have a lot of light there.
Okay.
So, the lighting, the idea of the lighting would be, it'd be enough to light it, but it wouldn't be, um, overwhelming with the other two, the other light fixtures, the streetlight fixtures.
Oh, so the, the streetlight's not on the plan, I don't think.
No, it's, it's shown on the, huh.
It's shown on that one there.
It's that little sun-looking thing.
Yeah, it's right here, this is that globe right there.
That's the streetlight on central.
And there is another new streetlight, the, it's, it's off the page here a little bit, just on the street, right in front of Pioneer.
And the, the way the concept is, uh, presented, what type of ongoing maintenance do you feel would have to be regularly done to have, um, it look very sharp ten to fifteen years from now?
Uh, the plants would need to be maintained, and that's one reason why I would recommend drip line irrigation, which is, is a, you know, it's not spray, it's, it's, you know, tubing that's in the planting beds, uh, to help the plants live, now, the one thing with perennials, for example, they're not really, they don't last forever, they do need to be replaced after, you know, depending, after ten, fifteen years even, so, um, the best thing you could do is, yeah, try to tend to the plants, stay on top of that, weeding it, um, and making sure the plants are, are in good shape, you know, the, the, these, uh, the landscape form benches, right now, they have benches that are on the Greenway in Minneapolis, toughest part, some of the toughest neighborhoods in, they've been there over ten years and they have endured really well, so I think investing in high-quality site furnishings is, is important as well for that very reason.
Is there water access on this site?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So drip line would not be a big issue?
I don't know.
Same with electricity for the clock?
Yeah, there, there's, yep, it's, utilities are available.
And there was, um, I s- sit on the co- the committee, and there was also talk about snow removal in the winter, um, and I'm not sure where we landed on that, um, but with this particular design, do you see any, any issues with at least keeping most of the snow removal, I mean, clearly, we get a heavy snowfall, and that's probably gonna be one of the last properties to be touched, but was the intent to have it clear through the winter as well?
Uh, I think that was something that was gonna need to be discussed and determined, uh, I think the last we discussed with the committee was to have signs, you know, as a measure to keep people out during the winter. I mean, it's gonna be up to the city, I think, how, how you want to manage, manage the space.
Matt, do you have any concerns at all?
No, I, I voiced a couple of concerns in the very beginning process, and we made modifications to that, um, no, this design will work, for the Parks Department and, um, yeah, and when it comes to the perennials, I ca- a question about kinda maintenance, I would say there's probably a day's worth of, you know, cutting them all down at the end of the season, just to let them regrow, uh, again, like she said, ten, ten to fifteen years, the perennials around City Hall are around that age, and a lot of them have been split because they just keep on multiplying, so, yeah, there's, anytime you do a design or a landscape, there's always maintenance to it, but, no, we, uh, I think this will work out really nice.
Thank you.
Does our police chief have any issues with the design, or any concerns with, uh, its usage, or?
I don't think so, um. I don't see a concern. Should not be any skateboarders down there, because it's on Main Street. So, you know, um, as for winter, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how much use it's gonna have during the winter, and how much maintenance we would wanna do during the winter, um. With snow on it, are they gonna have events there during the winter, um, or do we keep it open through the parade of lights, and then if it snows, we're done with the maintenance until spring? Uh, I think that's.
I think that's an ongoing discussion, but it was brought up at a committee, one of the committee meetings, that, uh, maybe we just leave it and put a close signs on it, or, we'll evaluate that down the road, but I'm not too concerned about that at this point.
Any other questions? I heard the clock's gonna be winded up, so they don't.
Who's gonna do that? My, my wheelchair goes up, so I'll take it.
So, okay, thank you, um. What's, oh, I'm sorry, Kay. Sure.
The committee started meeting in the beginning of November, uh, or in the, the beginning of two thousand.
Kay, can you come up?
You know, it's my wagon.
Here, they'll give you a microphone.
I'm still rehabbing a knee. Um, the, the committee started meeting in two thousand nineteen, it was a solicited group of people, and then we had some volunteers like Rita Goggins and Bob Van Oostek asking if they could join, and certainly, we said yes. Um, we struggled in the beginning, we did a lot of brainstorming, people offered their own visions of what they liked to see, we started out with the mural, and then the mural went away. I think the end product, through Jen and Karen's help, she really streamlined the whole process towards the end, but I think it's a, it's a plaza that we're all gonna be proud of, and I believe the donors will be very happy. And I believe. And I believe somebody's going to have to oversee this. It's going to get neglected. It can't be titled a park because of the MinDOT funding. But I think the plaza has to come under the auspices of a certain group, hopefully the Park Board, that continually visits it and comes up with problems or new ideas. And I would hope that in the continuing years, our committee will be consulted for maybe the public art aspect of it. Um, we believe that's really important and we have a lot of artists and creative people on that, so I hope that you keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. I just wanted to let you know that I do sit on the Park Board and we did have some discussion about it. So we were happy to ensure that it falls under at least our advice to City Council.
Kay, any other questions?
Yes.
Bob?
Could I just add one thing? I'm, I'm Bob Venosik and I was a member of the committee. One of the things we, we found early on was it's not a big space and it, it makes it more difficult to figure out what you're going to do when you're dealing with a relatively small space. And so it did take us a while to work our way through to what, to what we have now. But I also want to make a, a, a point about the art. We feel having some public art in that space is very important. We were not ready to come with specific proposals, but we do think it's important that some dollars be set aside so that art can be installed. And we think we'll have a, a much better idea what would be the most appropriate work of art once the work starts getting done on it and we can see what it looks like come next spring and summer.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So I guess tonight, Mr. Mayor, unless you've got something else?
No, we just need approval for the plan.
Yes, I was going to say tonight, we're looking for approval of this kind of final concept design and then authorizing them to begin work on tasks three through five, which are kind of laid out. Totalling forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents. And then as the work continues, that amount will be built up and brought to you for payment. That makes sense.
Well, thank you, Kay, and the whole committee that worked on it, that's, it looks beautiful, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'll make it look, it's a lot better than what it is now, so.
I'll make the motion if you want.
Okay. Rick's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sean made the second. Is there any other discussion?
I just had a question for clarification because Bob brought up the, the sentence that stuck in my mind, set money aside for art. Is that in these numbers?
That would be, that would be my interpretation, our budgeting process at a later date.
Okay, so is there art space that you discuss, that's what you presented, that there's space for art here?
Yes, there's an opportunity for art, yes.
Okay.
So if I remember correctly, some of our discussion was that if there was someone in the public that wanted to display a piece of their art. We would find approval for it, but then in all likelihood, the city would pay for the installation of it. Not for the actual cost of the artwork.
I believe if the estimate comes in less than what was budgeted for. With the bond, we have three years to use up the rest of the money. Is that correct? That's what we told, we're told by Patty.
Yes, I'm not sure about that.
That is correct.
So I, I guess we're requesting that that money be left in a pot someplace that this group could access for the public art if it comes in under budget.
Well, I'm glad you brought the, or discussed that. I just wanted to hopefully not have any misunderstandings as we move forward and, because there's no additional money that I'm aware of that's being set aside anywhere for art besides what, what's here. So future installations would be under the purview of the Parks Board.
Correct.
And, and that's the avenue that you have to finance it or fund it.
Right, yeah. So we've got a park equipment fund, of course, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Do I need to add that to the, um, motion?
No.
That we take the remainder of the money and put it to them?
Because we don't know yet if there's going to be money left. So. There was a motion, a second, to approve the, to go ahead to the next steps. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add something. I would love to see if the city could put up a sign like the future, you know, uh, future Central Plaza. And maybe with a picture of the design, so that the public have an, has an idea of what that space will eventually look like. So just put it out there for some thought.
Great idea.
Okay. Approval of the twenty twenty-two health insurance renewal with Health Partners?
Yes, the next item is the annual kind of re-up of health insurance. And as you can see in the memo before you, our costs are increasing about six percent for twenty twenty-two over last year, or I guess be this year. That, uh, everything else would remain the same in terms of the employer, employee contributions, the deductible and the HSA contribution. So I guess I'd recommend approval of re-upping with Health Partners for twenty twenty-two.
Was there any, any, were there any bids from other health insurance carriers to see a comparison of the market?
I do not believe we went out for bid this year. I was kind of looking back in our notes. I can't tell exactly when the last time we went out for bid was. But I do not believe it happened this year. I know that's usually something that's coordinated that you end up reaching out to various each year.
I thought that's what our broker was supposed to do.
I, I could check with Patty. I guess I'm not, I didn't, I was not made aware of any going out in that case.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we go out to bid. I think, you know, because we've hired the broker, the broker goes out and, and checks with the various carriers and then comes back with the findings for a choice. At least that's seems to have been the process in the past. It's not a, it's not a formal RFP. So I, I'm just curious, you know, I see a six percent increase. However, I just read in the paper that for twenty twenty-two, a lot of health insurance carriers are possibly seeing a reduction in premium, so I would just be interested in seeing what the other carriers would have bid on for the insurance for the city.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can definitely check on that and get back to you all if you wish.
I agree. I'd like to see that as well. Should we table this until?
Sure, we can. Do, is there a time issue? Yeah, that was the question.
I don't believe there's a time issue.
Well, there's usually an open enrollment period. I don't know what the city has.
Yeah, but I'm trying to remember off the top of my head when we set that for. Do you remember?
It was like the first week of November, I want to say.
This is November, I believe.
I remember Patty talking about it last week.
So you really don't have any time?
No, there's not a lot of time, but you, the, the broker of record, because I am in the industry, is responsible for reaching out to the various carriers. So that broker should have numbers back from the other carriers. And the recommendation to the city was for Health Partners, presumably based on the bids that came back. So I'm hoping that the broker's got some additional information. I know time is tight, you know, it's, uh, open enrollment and decisions have to be made before the one-one twenty twenty-two, uh, plan year. So I'm not asking that we start the whole process over, but.
Yep, so one option we have, because we have not yet advertised for our special meeting next week, is I can get that information to bring it back to you next week on the twenty-fifth, when we're, we're already here for our budget meeting. So I can just add that to the agenda since we have not yet advertised for that meeting.
Because I'm assuming this Gallagher is our broker.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But, uh, open enrollment is predicated on us approving this, I believe, so it, it will, if we don't approve it next week, it will throw a clog in.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with what you're talking about. We, I used to work with a broker that did the same, what you're talking about.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll table that till the next meeting. Okay. Uh, the meeting of the twenty-fifth. Memorial Park History Storage Shed. Who wants to talk about that?
Uh, yes, this is an item that Ken had put together and I know we have Dennis DeVorek, who, were you prepared to speak to it at all tonight? I'm not entirely sure what you and Ken had talked about.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, yes, so I know that, uh, just as quick detail, the Historic Society is looking at placing a new shed on their property for storage purposes. And Mr. DeVorek, I guess, can speak a little bit more to that if you have any questions.
Yep. Is it a new shed or an additional shed?
Oh, this is going to be new.
Oh, so it's going to replace the one that's there?
No.
Oh, that's.
No. This, the concept for this began before COVID and then I tabled it because it wasn't a good time to bring this forward. However, as a result, we're opening up the log house and the history shed to the public and for tours of the, for schoolchildren. We recently gave a tour to the sixth graders at Saint Wenceslaus School. And which requires pushing out the sleigh and other items in there and then when, when my wife and I give tours, we have to find someone to help us during the day. We always call upon the city, which they've been graciously receptive to. So I also have items at home that we use in the park and so I want those out of my buildings because I do not know how lo- much longer I'll be there. And it's a responsibility of the Historical Society to come up with a solution. So this was my solution. The building will be twelve by fourteen on a floating slab. And it will be eleven feet. I don't know if, you have the diagram, whether it's for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you see it in front of you. And it'll not be open to the public. It'll be used for storage and for items to be utilized when we are open or for special events. The wood has been donated as it was before. It'd be the same wood exterior. The lane of the cement has been donated. The site preparation has been donated. The removal of a cedar tree has been discussed with the Park Board. The removal and the stump removal has also been donated. The, the shed is not meant to be, it's meant to fit in and to be utilized as a functional piece or a building. And it's close enough that it will not obscure the vision. It'll just add to the, what we call the history campus of the park. And I think that we have proved that what we have done so far has been beneficial and it has been, after all, the city came to me and asked me to do something with the log house. So I proceeded with that in my, the efforts that I could best serve to make that happen and be possible. The placement will not impact any old growth. It, yes, it'll require the removal of a, a tree. It's not, the cedar tree is, tree is not part of the old growth, the old woods. Uh, it's not an understory tree. And so I've had Ken Andich and Chad Lender stop at the site and look at it and I had, Ketslov came and had looked at it last week. And so I've utilized, uh, Dave Gerold, who'd originally built the shed for us, come and take a look, give us ideas. I've tried to cover my tracks regarding this. And I think that it will prove to be an asset for the later use by the whoever takes it over after I no longer am able to. I always look into the future, you know, I have, I always say I haven't got much time left. But in the pro- in the time that I do have, I'm going to manage it and proceed in a positive and constructive manner. Are there any questions regarding the shed and, uh? We, I went to a shed style because I didn't want to compete and it's cheaper than a, a gable roof. Uh, as far as fundraising, we received a thirty-five hundred dollar, uh, four dollar donation and gift to get this project started. I didn't. And we are reaching out to, um, I'm just sending a letter, letter to Electromed not to put the pressure on them, but, um, I was encouraged to do this by Dr. George Nguyen. And so that has been sent and should have been received today. I'm asking the city, the Park Board, and as I met with the Park Board last week, to ask if we can regain support for the project as well as potential funding for it. I do not know how much it'll cost. I have, I'm donating wood and all, as I said, all the other wood has been donated. We just have to kind of work on that fundraising over the winter, but I would like to get the cement pad slab laid so that we can begin next spring. I just put a figure out on your memo that was sent to you or given to you. And, uh, I've never had any problem. I raised over sixty thousand dollars in in-kind and financial donation for the last project I did. So I've had success with that and I, I, I've received an enormous amount of support, as I did at that time from the city and through in-kind donations from the community. So I'm proud to represent the New Prague Area Historical Society and this venture. And, um, any questions? Any comments?
Yeah, it looks good. Looks nice. Good plan. Thank you. It'd be nice to get your, the tools out of your garage too, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I, it's, you know, I just, I feel that it's, uh, there's a better place for them. With the, with the parade of lights and Christmas and the log house that we're planning in December. And, uh, we always receive a lot of wonderful comments and visitors when we do open it up, so we're anxious to do that again. I should say the sixth grade, by the way, seventh grade from Saint Wens, were cleaning up the area around the log house and the history shed last time we were there. And it's just great to see this community, so, community involvement and support from all different directions. I, I do want to also comment that, uh, that my wife and I did a video, a virtual tour of the log house and the history shed, which is available to all the schools. The schools have been alerted to that. The curriculum director is aware of it and then she sent out memos to the, to the teachers and the public school system, as well as the parochial school system. And we did the virtual drone flyover video that we paid and supported and it's available on our, both are very, available on our website. So if you haven't visited our website, I encourage you to do so because in regard to this plaza, this was the concept that we had going forth in its design. And we, as the Historical Society, look forward to be part of the interpretive component of this, of the plaza. As an example, that was part of the MinDOT conversation. And it can be utilized in many different ways, including the projection of historical photographs of Main Street on that wall. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the storage shed.
Okay, there's a motion from Sean, a seconded by Rick, to approve the storage shed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for so much for your support.
Thank you for, you do, you do a lot for the town too.
You're very welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, miscellaneous, uh, we have the meeting minutes from the Park Board and the EDA in the packet, if anybody has any questions. And then Josh, you have the three.
Yes, the first one is a recommendation for hire and I will cede the floor to Matt.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, uh, this position's being filled after an employee took a position with another city. We started the advertising on September thirteenth. We started the advertising on September thirteenth in the New Prague Times and many other employee, employment sites. With the closing date of October first, we received twenty-five applicant, applicants. After reviewing all the applicants and doing a training and experience point system, we did six in, six in-person interviews. Upon completion of the interviews, it was a staff's recommendation to Josh, to Josh Teslov, that the park's position be offered to Sean Volokh. Mr. Volokh currently resides in the city of New Prague. He's owned his own construction business for more than twenty years, where he's done framing, sheet rock, roofing, and finish work. Mr. Volokh also owns a cabin where he has a food plot, where he does lots of planting and weed control. His staff's recommendation that the mayor and city council appoint Mr. Volokh to the park's maintenance position with a start date of November first and a starting payer, pay wage of twenty-five sixty-six, pay grade eight, step five. This offer is pending a physical and a drug exam, a drug and alcohol test.
Okay, you heard the recommendation. Is there any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Sean, seconded by Maggie, to approve Sean Volokh as the new parks person. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, next item I had was a personnel update. I just wanted to inform you all. You knew it was coming. I received Patty's letter of resignation here earlier than Friday, the end of the day. Her intent is to retire as of January twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-two. And so with that, I will probably, at the next meeting, be bringing back kind of information so we can get started on that search and hopefully get someone lined up so there's as little gap as possible, so.
Josh, do you know if January twenty-eighth will be her last date, or is there a vacation that she would be gone much sooner than that?
As far as I know, that that will be her last day. She hasn't informed me of any potential vacation before that, but I will keep the council updated if for some reason I hear otherwise.
All right, thank you.
Is there a potential to use a firm that's similar to yours, the, the one that we use for your search?
Yes, um, there, there's always potential for it. I personally, I guess, I don't know if it's necessary in this case. I know when I bring back the next, next meeting, when I bring back kind of the information that will go out for hire, I wanted to talk to you all about potentially forming a hiring committee of myself and maybe one or two of you, you all, to kind of sit in on the interviews. And I think we could do a lot of the work that a hiring firm would do without having to pay the fees. Having gone through the hiring process myself, I kind of know where they're posting all these jobs anyway. And really, what a hiring firm would bring us is someone to sift through the applications at that point. And so if we have a hiring committee of myself and a couple of you, I think we could do the same, same work without, without the fee. But if, if council wants to go with the firm, I mean, we can always look at that option, too.
Thank you.
When you come back with that information, Josh, would you bring back the full job description, the full narrative job description, so we can kind of review? And see if all those items are still applicable, or if some have kind of gone by the wayside, or it needs to be pruned or updated?
Yes, that was my intention. The final item that I want to talk to you about was the ARPA funding. During our kind of strategy goal-setting session, I'd mentioned to you all about the possibility of a firm looking at our lost revenue that we could allocate those funds for, which would give us a greater flexibility on how we use those funds ultimately. So I did speak with our auditor, as well as, excuse me, Baker Tilly, to kind of get two quotes. Both of them are similar. They're both not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. And they charge an hourly rate then, based on how much time that they assume not to exceed that fifteen hundred dollar point. Baker Tilly gave us a estimate of about a thousand dollars with their not to exceed fifteen hundred. And our auditor, Abdo, just gave us the not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. And what they would ultimately do is kind of look back through our finances using the formulas that the federal government has put out for how to calculate lost revenue and to see if we have any lost revenue over the time period. I believe it goes back to twenty sixteen. And so if that's the case, we could allocate our ARPA funding towards that, which would then be our allocation of how we used it and would free it up to use it how we wished at that point. So I guess if that is all right with you, I would recommend, I guess, going with Abdo, only in that they're a little more familiar with our finances already. And knowing that it's an hourly rate would probably come in cheaper, I would assume, ultimately.
I would agree. I think it's a great start. I think we should get on it ASAP, as soon as possible, and like you said, it would free up and really kind of set, set the parameters as far as what may be available to use other places and then what's left over that we need to really work on to figure out how to, how to use it.
And, and we do have until the end of twenty twenty-four to use those funds, so there's no necessary time crunch on it, but I, like you said, it's nice to get on it, so we kind of have a plan going forward.
Yeah, I guess I have more of a sense of urgency in the sense I would be nice to get this, start working on it in the next, in next year. And to me, this is the first step, that we need to know this information first. And hopefully, it's a big number, but.
I know, speaking with, I know speaking with other city administrators, it sounds like at least a few of the cities in Scott County were able to allocate all of their funding towards lost revenue, so. The formulas are set up basically based off of your revenue without, it sounds like, looking at why you got that revenue. So if you had a large project, say in twenty eighteen, where you received a lot of grants for it, and then in twenty nineteen, your budget didn't change, but you just weren't receiving those grants, it looks like on paper you lost revenue, and that counts in allocation. Losing revenue year to year. And there's a little more subtle, subtleties to it than that, but that's kind of how it was explained to me from the forty thousand foot level.
I totally support it. I think it's well worth the fifteen or whatever it costs to do that, and in light of Patty leaving, it'd be better to have someone else be involved in doing it that can help us fill it out to make sure we have the right numbers.
Yeah.
To comply.
So I guess I'd just look for a motion then to allow us to kind of get the process started with Abdo.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and second to start the process with Abdo. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right. Anything else? Does council have anything? You have anything, Maggie?
I do not, other than my request for the Central Plaza future sign.
I'll work with the SEH and get some dollar amounts to see what, something like that would get cost, would cost.
Thank you.
Sean?
Just real quick, something to get on the radar for Maggie and the park board. Had a resident ask about, there's a vacant lot on English and Music Street. I was gonna ask Ken if he was here. There doesn't seem to be a park over there. There's a vacant lot that seems like it'll be difficult to build on, and it's one of the last remaining lots over there, but ton of little kids in that neighborhood. They thought maybe a little park might be something that we could look at and approach the owner of that lot on. So just wanted to get on the radar.
Okay, thanks, yeah. If we can have Ken put that on our park board agenda for next month's meeting.
I will have us look into it and get back to you guys.
Thank you.
And then one other thing I wanted just to let Matt know, that Henches, I heard from a family that was holding a funeral at Saint Wentz, and the Henches guys stopped all their, when the honor guard came out, stopped all their equipment, went, sat, stood on the sidewalk, took their helmets off, their hard hats, and the family was very moved by Henches doing that, so.
That's awesome.
I'm gonna reach out to, I'm gonna reach out to the Henches guys and
I definitely will.
And just say thank you for that, so. They were very accommodating for that funeral, and it was awesome, they said, so.
Yeah, I will say, about a month ago, we had that big funeral, funeral, funeral at Brugix Funeral Home. And without even questioning, I asked them if they could put a crossing there at, at Lexington, and didn't even hesitate, absolutely. So they're really good to work with.
Great, thank you. That was it.
Okay, and then to piggyback, that's why I kind of want, I mentioned for the ribbon cutting, you know, the elected stand up there and everybody takes the pats on the back, but it isn't the so I'd like some of the Henches crew, especially if there's New Prague people in that crew.
There's a lot of New Prague guys.
Yep.
Obviously based out of Jordan, so.
Yep.
I have reached out to them. As soon as I say there's hot dogs there, they'll be there.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like them to be, you know, part of the photo and stuff, because I think, you know,
Yep.
you know, as, the politicians will be there for doggone sure, you know, but those are, those are the people that did all the hard work all year and during the hot and stuff, so if you could finagle that, that'd be great.
Yep, I definitely will.
That's all I have.
And SEH, too, to have Chris there?
Well, I think that's part of it, that, anyway, but I just wanted to make sure that, that construction, because I think they're always kind of
Yeah.
you know, you stay working on the other end, and so I'd like them to be included.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, we've reached out to quite a few people, SEH, MinDOT. There's gonna be a lot of people there, but
Yeah.
I agree, having the, uh, the guys that are doing the labor would be great to see there, too.
Yep. I told Steve that, anyway. I saw Steve Henches last weekend, and I told him that, that was an idea, so. That's all I have.
Bruce?
I just to remind, ribbon cutting next Tuesday, twelve o'clock.
Okay.
Nothing else. No further.
Okay. Anybody else? Jim? Matt?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a second. There is a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Look at that one.
Well, I think that was a record.